March 4th, 2018, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. To begin, I will call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you would now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call these votes.
Granquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Weeblehouse?
Muren?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Vile?
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
I would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda with these changes. There's been a request to remove items 28 and 29 from the full agenda.
I would so move, Your Honor, with the removal of those two items.
Second. Okay, motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that takes us to item number 20, under Public Hearings and Related Action, council agenda. Since items number 20 and 22 are related, I will open the public hearings at the request of Joyce Crowley to consider a zoning change from RR Rural Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial District on property generally addressed as 2525 East Omaha Avenue, and the public hearing at the request of MR Wilkie Enterprises LLC to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District to RR Rural Residential District on property addressed as 2501 East Omaha Avenue. And to kick off the discussion on this, Val, could you give us some background, please?
Yes, thank you. This is gonna sound more complicated than I think it is. I have up on the screen here the piece of property that's number 20, that is currently zoned RR, and what the request is for the zone change is the portion of the flag lot on the east side to be revised from RR to I-1, and this is in conjunction with the next zone change where that strip will be flipped to the west side, and what is I-1 will be changed to RR, and this will be fixed in the plat that is also on the agenda tonight. So essentially, the plat will flip that flag pole of the lot to the other side so that the two industrial areas, the semi-truck dealer and what wants to go on this southern lot here, the I-1s will be adjacent to each other without that strip of RR in between them.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions for Val before we start? It's a public hearing, so anyone?
Oh, Val, sorry. Sorry, Your Honor. You're talking about leaving the property just to the north there. That'd be RR, correct?
Right. The flag of the flag lot will still be RR. It'll just be the pole of the flag that'll be flipped to the other side. Because what happened is at Planning Commission, so you'll hear the Planning Commission letters, the initial request was just to zone change the pole of Joyce Crowley's, and so Planning Commission recommended denial of that because that would put two zonings on one lot, and they actually suggested this fix of replating it, taking that access to the north from out between the two I-1s. And the applicant is here tonight, too, if you have any questions for him.
So this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment on this can do so now. Move to first, actually, Planning Commission report on both items, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 18, 2018, at the request of Joyce Crowley to consider zoning change from RR Rural Residential to I-1 Light Industrial on property generally addressed as 2525 East Omaha Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends denial on the request of an eight-to-zero vote. And then... On February 20th, 2019, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the request of MR Wilkie Enterprises LLC to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial to RR Rural Residential on property at 2501 East Omaha Avenue, and they recommend approval of the request on eight-to-zero vote.
Thank you, Val. At this point, I'll close both hearings and move to item number 21. Would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5602 approving a zoning change from RR Rural Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial District on property generally addressed as 2525 East Omaha Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5602.
Okay, motion in second. Any questions on this, council, or any further discussion on what we're trying to achieve here?
So if we vote no, we're agreeing with?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we vote no, then we're agreeing with the Commission report?
Commission report.
Yeah, Val, maybe explain that a little bit, because there's been, the Planning Commission heard the original proposal and recommended this approval, but since that time, there were changes and a compromise of sorts made that we're considering right now, correct?
Right. So the first one is coming with a recommendation of denial from Planning Commission because that was the only thing before them at the time, and it was going to put two zonings on one lot. And so we kept that zone change alive as these other processes kept, came up with it and caught up with it, and so they would be for it now because it was Planning Commission's recommendation to do this switch of the pole, and if all of these would've come together at Planning Commission at the same time, they would've recommended approval, so...
So tonight, given that compromise, items 21 and 23 were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission?
Well, yeah. I mean, this was what they recommended after the first one came before them.
Subsequent to.
Mm-hmm. But we didn't want to make the applicant start completely over again with that one zone change, so we kept it alive, so that when these all caught up, it would be a cohesive package to fix this.
So now we're caught up?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're caught up, and items 21 and 23 are recommended to move forward to create a fix?
That was most, as I was reviewing this this week, and I thought, what in the, you haven't stumped me too often, but you really did on this one. And now, since I, I guess the thing that catches it, too, if you look on the two letters from the Planning Commission, one was December 18th, and then this last one is February 20th, where things catch on up and actually make sense now, so...
Basically, a switcheroo of the pole of the flag line is what we're doing.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, now we're clear as mud, yes?
Seldom hear it.
That's right. All right. Anything else? Any further questions or comments, council? If not, then short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5602 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5602 carries on second and third.
Okay, item number 23, the second half of the switcheroo. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5603 approving a zoning change from I-1 to RR on property addressed as 2501 East Omaha Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5603 on first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any discussion, further comments on this, council? If none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5603 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5603 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5603 carries on second and third.
To our regular agenda, item number 24, we look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement with the Norfolk Area Visitors Bureau, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, allowing the use of public property generally located in the downtown area and to include the use of private property upon approval of the property owner to exhibit up to 11 sculptures from May through the following April, with automatic renewal on May 1st of each year until terminated by a 90-day notice prior to renewal by either party.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, motion second, and I think to kick off discussion, Lyle, okay. Very good, all right, the Visitors Bureau.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Tracy Jeffrey with the Norfolk Area Visitors Bureau. We are here to present an exciting and new project for the Norfolk area. This is the results of collaborative efforts between the Norfolk Area Visitors Bureau, the Chamber, Norfolk Arts Center, area artists, including Mike Fluent, Lon Atwood, and Peg Cottle, in the city of Norfolk. We are happy to announce the first-ever Sculpture Walk in Norfolk. Our first Sculpture Walk will take place in the heart of downtown Norfolk and feature up to 10 sculptures, works of art employing various materials and styles of artists from across the Midwest. We are building on efforts of other communities which have seen their own Sculpture Walk meet with success. We have received resources from other communities with similar events.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chair Dahl Kutter from the Chamber, it's good to see you all. So the reason we're here tonight is for approval of your partnership in this project and to enter into a contract with you to place the sculptures on public property. The initial Sculpture Walk will include those 10 works that Tracy talked about, and they'll all be in the downtown Norfolk area. We've already worked with the city staff and committee to secure different locations for displaying these sculptures, and consideration was given to safety, insurance, and liability, and that is all included in the contract. As far as the timeline goes, we would like to launch this around May 10th and 11th with a opening ceremony, and people will be able to download a tour map of the walk, and they'll be able to vote for their favorite sculpture along the way. The People's Choice Award will be awarded at the Riverpoint Arts Festival in September, and sculptures will also be available for purchase.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Denise Hanson with the Norfolk Arts Center. The Norfolk Arts Center is excited to be a part of this project because we believe this new project will enhance quality of life in the Norfolk area and provide more opportunity for visitors coming to town as well as Norfolk residents. Studies show that public art improves economic growth and sustainability, promotes cultural identity, promotes cultural understanding, and enhances public health and belonging. This committee looks forward to working with the city council. This is just one of the many projects embraced by the city which will propel us into the bright future. We appreciate the partnership of the city on getting this project off the ground. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you. Just for the record here, can you guys talk a little bit about how the sculptures are obtained for this? How the artists are encouraged to take part in this process? And I think there's examples from other communities, and we followed other models. Maybe you can talk about how that was all established?
Yeah, one of our ideas came out of a committee, and we reached out to Yankton, South Dakota, to see how they did their Riverwalk project, and from there, we used some of their materials and reached out to over 200 artists across the United States to participate in our first-ever Sculpture Walk, and from there, they submitted their sculptures for the committee to review, and from there, the selection committee reviewed them to make sure that they were safe and that they would fit into our downtown area, and from there, we chose our top nine.
And so, and there's a monetary award for the artist who wins at the end of this, right?
Yep.
That's the encouragement for the artist to take part?
Yes. And we're hoping that the public will purchase these sculptures as well, so that once we start getting some sculptures, then we'll just continue to grow each year off of the first year to make it figure.
Tracy, there are nine, is that right?
There is, yes.
Yeah, and how many entries were submitted?
There was 19.
19?
Yes.
Very good.
It will have the option to go up to 11. We have, for sure, we have nine, and we have another artist that will probably submit as well to be a part of it, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you explain the funding again? I was reading through here, and it says something about no funding provided by the city?
That is correct. The Visitors Bureau will help offset those costs. Each artist that we have submitted and won will receive $500 to help offset their costs to come here, and then the People's Choice Award, they'll get an additional $500.
It says downtown, are you looking at putting them out on the actual Riverwalk trails that have been put in so far, like around Johnson Park and?
The locations right now are between Seventh Street and First Street.
Mostly along Norfolk Avenue?
Long Norfolk Avenue. Brash will be torn up, so that is, but we'll have one at the Arts Center and then a couple at...
I'll jump in here. That's fine. Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. There will be a multitude of them. The whole intent initially was to make a walking route, basically from, stretching from east, east of the river, Hy-Vee East Gas Station, there'll be one at that point, and then along Brash in the future. This year, as she mentioned, it'll be under construction, so not this year, but perhaps in the future, all the way over to the, about the Seventh Street, across from the fire station, down Seventh Street to Brash area, and then back to their place of origin again, and perhaps one at the baseball field as well, Memorial Field.
There is a map in the, or an aerial in the packet.
That's why I was looking at it, to see if it was included in the...
There's some little green dots and red circles.
Yeah, green didn't show up very well. It did happen to be the best one that did show up. I tried to do some red circles on there as well, but that's the general area to be depicted on the map.
Very good. I think it's certainly true that public art enhances spaces. If you look at the Art Johnny Carson mural at Third Norfolk, that's a good example. So, really want to commend the Visitors Bureau for stepping up and taking the initiative of spearheading this. Again, public art enhances aesthetics and improves the feel of a space, and I think this project will certainly do that. And it's good to see people coming together in the community, the Chamber, the Arts Center, several members of the community being involved to help make this all happen. It's these kinds of public-private partnerships that strengthen the community, so you're all to be commended, I think, for your efforts in this. Thank you. Okay, I think you're done.
All right.
All right, any discussion on this, council? Questions or further comments? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
All right, item number 25, I would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2019-14 approving the final plat and subdivision agreement of Blueberry Hills Third Subdivision.
I'll offer for consideration Resolution 2019-14.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second, and Val, could you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, this is the plat that goes along with the zone changes that we just did, so this is cleaning up then the boundary lines and taking out that strip of RR and reconnecting it to the northern lot on the west side and expanding the eastern boundary of the I-1 lot. So everything will be in line then with the correct zoning.
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions, council? Okay, if none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2019-14 is adopted.
Item 26 would entertain a motion to consider resolution number 2019-15 approving a sidewalk waiver for MR Wilkie Enterprises LLC at 2501 East Omaha Avenue.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number 2019-15.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, and Val, a little refresher on the discussion on this sidewalk waiver request, please.
This is the same area of town with the same lot. They are pulling a building permit to build on that I-1 lot, which has frontage along the highway, and so therefore you have the requirement when you pull a building permit to put a four-foot sidewalk along the right-ofways, and so they're asking for a sidewalk waiver to not put that in at this time.
Okay, makes sense. Any questions for Val? Comments, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2019-15 is adopted.
Okay, item 27, look for a motion to consider approval of the purchase of a prefabricated concrete restroom building for $53,255 from Sourcewell Contract Number 030117-CXT as part of the skate park renovation and upgrade.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
Okay, motion second, and Lyle?
That's all.
Lyle and Pat, there, there we go.
This is for a precast concrete...
In this, just, Pat Mersny or Parks?
I'm sorry, Mersny, Parks Superintendent, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is for a precast concrete building to go with the skate park. We looked originally at one, and the more we looked into it, we felt it quite wasn't fitting into the landscape there as well as this one here. This one will be split-faced block. We're designing, or we're having it colored to match the ticket booth, which is very close to it, so it feels like it goes with the Memorial Field development there. It's a little bit more, about $7,000, $8,000 more than the other bathroom, but we're getting something that fits a lot easier. Utilities to be brought in was another $9,000. In lieu of taking away from the skate park monies, we were looking to take money out of a park enhancement fund, unallocated funds as of yet, to cover the extras so we don't have to lessen the skate park monies there. So we felt that was a good use of the monies there, and we think this is going to be a nice addition to the park there. It's a smaller bathroom, it's going to be like two family rooms, a men's and a women's, won't have stalls, it'll just be two family rooms right there, and it'll be connected by sidewalk, be handicapped accessible, and have some fountains on the outside of it. And a lot of the state, you know, the Gaven Park uses them, the City of Hastings just put one in, and they really like it. It's a government contract purchase, so I believe we purchased in Sourcewell before it, you know? So it's a trusted government contract, so... Do you have any questions?
So just one restroom, right? Just one?
One men's, one women's.
Oh, we'll be, okay, that's good, because I can see at the football games that are, or whatever's being played there, a lot of people sitting on that south end will walk out and use those restrooms. So they'll get used, they'll get used a lot.
Porter potty that's there now.
Because you see people go on the porter potty now during those games, because otherwise you gotta walk clear over there. By the time you walk, you might, you know, it'll be, they'll get used a lot, more than just by the people using the skate park.
It should be nice.
It'll be a nice addition to the park, and again, underlying funding for that skate park project came from a tourism grant that will allow for total renovation of the existing park, and part of the grant was to help make that area more ADA accessible, and this effort is certainly part of that, so appreciate the staff work that was done to use our resources wisely here and get the project done in a comprehensive way, so... Any other questions or comments?
I have one more. Do they have to be winterized then?
It'll have to be winterized.
Okay.
Every year, but it's set up for that.
About what time would that be when you?
Well, this could be a special circumstance, but we normally winterize by October 15th anymore. We push it to Halloween. We've run into a lot of vandalism on Halloween night, so that we usually make sure our buildings are locked by Halloween, and we'll winterize them starting from that point on.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Pat. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, moving to item number 30, we look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5600, creating sidewalk district number 2018-2, which provides for construction of a sidewalk along all that portion of Square Turn Boulevard from Benjamin Avenue to Wilson Avenue, 11th Street from Wilson Avenue South, approximately 328 and 1/3 feet, and Grant Avenue to approximately 197 and 1/3 feet west of Square Turn Boulevard. As a note, ordinance number 5600 passed on first reading at the February 19th City Council meeting.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number 5600 on second reading.
Second, then.
Okay, motion in second, and Mike, would you care to give us a refresher, background on this?
Sidewalk district, I'm sorry. So this is the, this'll be addition to the paving district that we're doing at the same location, and we're just extending the sidewalks, are not available from Benjamin all the way down to 11th, and so as part of that project, we are also including those sidewalks, so it's just, it's the way we're redesigning the street, it's appropriate to bring in the sidewalks at the same time, so...
Okay, thank you, Mike. Questions on this?
This'll, this'll be assessed, correct?
Yes, it will be.
Can anybody speak, or do I have to approve?
No, we, allow discussion, yes, you can come forward.
I guess I don't really understand this thing at all.
Can you tell us your name, ma'am?
What?
Can you tell us your name, please, ma'am?
Dan DeWalt, and I live on Grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Why are you doing this now? You're just doing a section of Square Turn, right? And you're just doing a section of 11th Street, and you're doing a section of Grant. Why just a section of 11th Street? You're just gonna do a couple blocks... Why just the section of Eleventh Street? You're just gonna do a couple blocks and let the rest go? No other sidewalk from there on? Or Square Turn just for a couple blocks and then you're done? Why are you doing this now?
I think, do we have a map we can... Can, in terms of the question of why now on this, can, um, staff help us address the, the, um, timing on the sidewalks being called in at this point?
Um, just the, uh, the, the location of sidewalks, just following, and you can see the aerial there. So, where they're being located and where they're connecting up on Grant there is just connecting into an existing sidewalk there. And then they do go all the way down to the existing sidewalk, kind of like.
So, you're making that connection?
Yeah, we're making that connection. Now, they do need, they do, um, she's right that, um, I can't remember, Wilson, what's the street that's just south of Grant?
Wilson.
Is, does not have sidewalks. I mean, there's a lot of vacant sidewalks. It's just, we weren't going that far into that neighborhood. We were just connecting this all in with our, our replacement pavement solution.
So, so is, uh, do I understand that, that if you start paving Eleventh Street at Benjamin, you're going to go to Wilson and stop?
So, where's, where, where there's no longer, where there's no, um, street existing right now, it's just the gravel, currently, that's all gonna be replaced with pavement.
Wait, I'm talking about Eleventh Street, not Square Turn?
No, so, uh, Eleventh Street is, has existing pavement, so we're not going anywhere.
Right, but you, but you want sidewalks there.
Right, just because we're, we were coming down there already and we're gonna extend it all the way.
You're coming down where already?
So, we're, so we're already coming down Square Turn to Eleventh, and we're, we're finishing up all of the, uh, handicap ramps at the intersection there, and that leaves a vacant sidewalk to the south, and so we, there's a gap.
Do you know Square Turn and Eleventh don't intersect?
They will.
They will?
Yeah. So, where it currently comes back around there to get to Eleventh, we're actually joining the streets there. So, there is actually right of way through there, city right of way, a lot of it.
Would you please go through that with me again? How is Square Turn gonna connect with Eleventh Street?
So, you can zoom in on that intersection there.
Mike, 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 you gotta both use that mic.
All right, okay, thanks, sir. So, so where you see that, that's, that's, um, I don't know what you call that, that, where it stubs out there, where this is coming up here, this will join completely straight in through there. So, this will no longer be going down this way, the way Square Turn is designed currently. We're actually bringing Square Turn to join in Eleventh directly.
And bringing that sidewalk along with it.
Yeah, so the sidewalks will join in on each sidewalk. There'll be a sidewalk come down here and join directly straight in. I can get just a, I can get a set of plans and show her, so.
So, the part of Grant that you want to do is just a little portion beside this guy's driveway down to Square Turn, right?
Yeah, just that little bit in here. 'Cause there's sidewalk existing there, we're just gonna complete the sidewalks up there.
Right.
So, it will come all together?
Yeah.
So, and the reason you want to do this is because?
Um, because it's, um, there's gaps in our sidewalk system and, and we're trying to complete our sidewalk system.
This is, ma'am, this is part of a larger effort, not only here, but throughout the community, to fill in gaps where there's not sidewalks. And a lot of this has to do, um, with being respectful for people with disabilities who, uh, right now would have really no way, um, to operate, uh, transportation on that stretch outside of using a vehicle. So, uh, these sidewalks that were not put in when these streets were established, and this is somewhat of a unique circumstance, given the configuration of the, of the street system there, um, while we're taking the occasion to fix that and fix the streets, we think it's, makes sense and is prudent to put in the sidewalks at the same time to fix that problem.
Are you aware of the drainage problem on the corner of Grant and Square Turn?
So, there will be, we are including in this right here, at this point in the, the street, there'll be a low point, so reflecting all that water down into here. So, there is a, we're extending the storm sewer, putting in new inlets here, and they, replacing these inlets here.
And that will be done before the sidewalks put in?
So, it'll all be done at the same time. This, this is all being bid out. It's one project.
So, when, when we look down to Grant, to Square Turn, we're not going to see...
No, you won't see that water anymore. We're just, we, we're gonna correct that though. Okay.
That's good enough for me.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any other discussion on this project? Or questions or comments, Council? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please, back.
An ordinance creating sidewalk district number Twenty-Eighteen dash two in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, describing said sidewalk district, ordering the construction of sidewalks therein, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance Fifty-Six Hundred on second reading, Council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muran, Jackson, File. Voting against the ordinance, Council Member Clausen. Ordinance Fifty-Six Hundred carries on second reading.
Okay. Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules, and since third reading doesn't allow for discussion, uh, that we would, um, suspend the rules and pass this on third reading this evening.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. If no further discussion, please vote.
Voting in favor, ordinance Fifty-Six Hundred, suspending the rules on third reading, Council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muran, Jackson, File. Voting against the ordinance on third reading, Council Member Clausen. Ordinance Fifty-Six Hundred carries on third reading.
Okay. Item number thirty-one, would entertain a motion to consider approval of ordinance Number Fifty-Six Oh Four, providing for amendment of the legal descriptions contained in ordinance Number Fifty-Five Eighty-Three, which created Gap Paving District Number Five Fifteen.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of ordinance Number Fifty-Six Oh Four.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second. And again, we'll look to engineering for some background on this, please. Or, or Val, or Andy?
I'm imagining legal descriptions. Yeah, so, um, I'm not gonna, I do know that there was just some simple, um, typos in the, in the previous. Yeah, that's fine.
Technically, which?
This is just some, they expanded the district from what it originally was, so they had to clean up, and I think some, some housekeeping items they had to add in there that weren't originally in the, in the document.
Okay, thank you. Andy, Mike, any questions or comments, Council, on this? Hearing none. Short title, please, back.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend ordinance Number Fifty-Five Thirty-Eight pursuant to Section Sixteen Two Oh Nine NRS Nineteen Forty-Three as amended, creating Gap Paving District Number Five Fifteen in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance Fifty-Six Oh Four on first reading, Council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Muran, Jackson, File. Voting against the ordinance, Council Member Clausen. Ordinance Fifty-Six Oh Four carries on first reading.
Okay, item number thirty-two, would look for a motion to consider ordinance Number Fifty-Six Oh Five, amending Section Twenty-four dash one sixty-nine of the City Code to update state statute references related to handicap parking contained in that section.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance Number Fifty-Six Oh Five.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, and Danny, some background on this, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Section Twenty-four dash one sixty-nine of the Norfolk City Code restricts parking on, an unauthorized vehicle in a marked handicap parking stall or space. Uh, nothing is changing with this ordinance. It's a simple housekeeping ordinance, really. Um, we're not changing anything substantive. Only the state statutory references, uh, are being updated here just to reflect the current citations. So, other than that, nothing's changing.
Okay, housekeeping matter. Any questions or discussion, Council? Hearing none. Short title, please, back.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section Twenty-four dash one sixty-nine of the official City Code to update state statute references contained in that section, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Fifty-Six Oh Five carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third reading as it's, um, just updating.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. If no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance Fifty-Six Oh Five carries on second and third.
And that concludes this meeting in the Norfolk City Council. Good evening.